They have a large infrastructure cost to expand utilities or roads or what have you in a situation where then that ultimate development is going to be a large job creator. We have not used that for warehouses, spec buildings and the like, although I'm asked every single week. So we don't have, you know, kind of a separate pool of money, but taxing requirements should be used in those appropriate times. We do utilize grants and try to leverage grants as much as we can. And again, I apologize for my PowerPoint. I like lost a slide. I'm gonna go back.
When we do, the TIF doesn't have to go to the county to be approved to?
It doesn't. Tax waiving does. TIF does not. You approve a resolution, basically letting them know. Um, how did this get so messed up? Okay. So common HRA uses could be used for operations, building a fund balance where you might want to build a fund balance to do a larger project. That's often the case with HRA. If you want to get involved in construction of affordable housing, you could utilize funds for strategic property acquisition and also creating internal loan programs. So oftentimes cities will create a revolving loan fund so it could provide gap financing. So you have a manufacturer who is in need of a piece of equipment. It's $100,000. They may have a gap where they can't finance that full $100,000 revolving loan fund could come in and help pay for half of that or provide that gap financing. A lot of communities create very, very small programs. Some have programs to pay the SAC fees for a new restaurant, to do something more to attract restaurants. There's a whole variety of things that we could use that are not on this list that we can, you know, provide you with in terms of ideas which to use a levy fund. Could go towards infrastructure for development and again, other special projects. So it's really pretty endless how you could utilize these funds. So that is really the purpose and what the outcome would be for goal one. Just to note, since it's been a priority of mine, we've been wanting to create this plan and work with the EDC to, you know, get a recommendation from them if it's a priority of theirs to incorporate this and then work with all of you through next year to see if this is something that the council would want to support. I'm just gonna stay on this page because my slides are all screwed up. Goal two, again, I just cut and pasted the goal or this page that you again could see the goal, the different strategies and the action items. So again, goal number two is expand existing businesses and promote entrepreneurship. So that first strategy is to establish a formal BRE plan. And this isn't something that the city has done, to my knowledge, for probably at least seven or 10 years. I think in the past there was some form of it. Katie and I are gonna roll out a much more enhanced BRE program starting this winter and into next year. She's gonna be leading the effort. And basically what it means is we go out and we seek input from our businesses. We're gonna partner with some EDC members, have them visit with us, and Katie and I will divide and conquer. And we have an established list of questions that have addressed all of the businesses so that we can really get a good handle on how those different businesses, whether it's commercial, medical, industrial, answer those and what kind of services and programs could we bring to them. So it's a first step that we need to and want to take to learn more about what our local businesses need, what kind of other businesses could enhance their work and their efforts, who should we be targeting to build off of our industrial park and our commercial areas. So that's gonna be our first thing out of the gate, even though it's goal two with this plan. And then you can see there's other different strategies to build off of from that. Some are really dialing in on our small businesses, our home-based businesses. What can we do to enhance and help people get out of their home-based business? Is it just an incubator space or something smaller that they need to be on the lease to be able to build into our commercial tax base by working outside of their home? So all of that is, you know, this effort is to address what our larger companies are gonna need all the way down to our very small businesses. Number three, establish Lakeville's competitive edge.
Incentivize them to get out of their home business. You're telling them to pay taxes by being in a...
From an expansion standpoint.
Bring them work.
Yep. And it's not gonna, it's not gonna suit everybody, certainly.
There's a reason why you create the home business and you gotta do the taxes.
Yep. But if we dial in and find that there's those folks that are growing and possibly beyond, you know, knowing who they are and being able to make contact with those folks to be able to then help find space for them, not trying to run them out of their home business, because there's many people that operate just fine in a home situation.
Yeah, but there's probably like a small manufacturer who's at CNC in the garage or something.
Yeah.
Well, in one point, just a curiosity point for that would be, there probably isn't data on this, but if I own a garage manufacturing thing in my home and all of a sudden I've just gotten to the point where I need, and I look and I go, well, I'm gonna go to community C instead of Lakeville. Do you have any data like that?
Without incentives, are we...
Right. We, I don't. And part of it is we, no, I, short answer, I don't. So it's partly just building those relationships and, you know, even if they want to remain in their home, are there services, things that we can help provide for them? So it's building that kind of relationship and expanding that relationship beyond the brick and mortar businesses. Goal three is really lengthy from the standpoint is there's a lot of different action items. I don't expect you'll be able to read. This is a huge PowerPoint violation. But the strategy is enhance awareness of the image of Lakeville and its opportunities. So this, a lot of this we are already doing. In the last few years, Katie and I have really intentionally pounded the pavement in different events and outreach to the brokerage community as well as specific companies. We do a lot with Greater MSP and with DED. You don't see all of that. A lot of it's behind the scenes and often a lot of times Lakeville isn't the one chosen. But it's those relationships and getting us out in front of the, particularly the brokerage community is people are aware of Lakeville and still aware of the land and the opportunities that we provide. So we're gonna continue doing that. And that's going beyond just locally with our local chamber. Address incentives to support workforce retention and attraction. A lot of this again is ongoing work that we participate with the Lakeville Works Program. We try to get the word out to our local businesses on specialized programs Dakota Tech could create for them, anything that we can do to help businesses make that connection. And we have been using the manufacturing appreciation event for a lot of this and the last several panels over probably the last five years have been all around workforce development. So we'll continue doing that. And then invest in transportation efforts that can improve access. This is a tricky one. Again, we want to continue to enhance the ridership for that bus rapid transit route, but we do hear sometimes from our industrial businesses of how do we get people from those transit stops internally in Lakeville? We don't have a lot of good options. There are some micro transit routes that are being tested. One in particular is in Oakdale and Woodbury with their new BRT line. I'm gonna be following that. I think that's kicking off in 2020, January 2025. I'll be following that to see if that is a model that could work in a kind of a condensed version here in Lakeville. But that is something that we do here for the business community. The EDC wanted to have that as a strategy. And then goal number four, strengthen Lakeville's local tax base. Again, this is a lot of continuing what we're doing. We really try to go after those projects that are gonna bring jobs, that are gonna have a manufacturing component along with an office and warehouse component. We do have a new spec building that we are currently reviewing for a new project out on County Road 70. It's 189,000 square feet. They're targeting companies that have all three, small office component, manufacturing component and warehouse component. Gone are the large office buildings, we all know that, but what we really wanna see is creation of new jobs. So that's part of it.
Are we missing out by not being actual members of Greater MSP or is it...
I don't. It's a good question. You know, we have great personal connections with them.
Yeah.
And a lot of what comes through them still circulates down to communities through their RFQs, RFIs, so we're still getting those. We don't, we haven't participated in national trade shows. That is something that could be offered if we were a member. So there's probably some things we're missing out, but it's an expensive endeavor.
Yeah. I'm just curious, like, I don't understand, I don't know anything about like the site selector world, but it's like, would we benefit?
I think we'd benefit more. One of the things Katie and I have toyed with is based on how the BRE rollout goes and the types of feedback we get, if we start getting very specific companies that our industries want to see in Lakeville, it might help to hire a specific site selector, not something like Greater SP, but a company that does the site selector to help us make those connections with those companies on a national-wide approach. So that might be something that we build into our department budget to be able to do. It's something Farmington rolled, I think it's Farmington rolled this out this past year. Katie and I met with the company they're using. There's quite a few others, but that's something that we might intentionally try to target in the coming year. And then goal five again is enhance Lakeville's distinct industrial and commercial districts. Again, part of this is looking for infill opportunities. Part of this is calling up and trying to attract businesses to our remaining commercial areas. We still do a lot of that. I do hear that things are happening at Heritage. Our staff met with someone who wants to come in with a plat for a couple of fast casual restaurants. I don't know who yet, but that we all know is a hotspot that we would like to see built. So we do make those intentional efforts.
Maybe the price is out of bounds.
Well, not necessarily like a Panera.
Like a Panera or Culvers.
Yeah. And I've called Panera four or five times already, so I'm not gonna give up.
Well, I think the challenge, like, I talked to a fast casual owner who has a location like, he wanted a second location in Lakeville. He just can't find a land. Cedar Dog, that's what he wanted to do. So at least one part of Lakeville.
Well, there's 179th and Cedar. They're looking. So, and again, part of it is knowing who's marketing those sites and having relationships with those sites. Last summer, we helped Transwestern, which is the broker for Heritage Commons, and we helped them update all of their marketing materials because it was so out of date. And just understanding the population center that you have around this area with the industrial park plus all the students who can, you know, maybe get out for lunch. And so we, you know, we try to intentionally figure out who's marketing it and how can we help them. So that's just a continuation of these kinds of efforts.
One thing I think I brought up, but I can't remember if you answered it or not, if somebody did. Have we in the past, like, been willing to share like customer data that we have from Heritage Liquor and from Keyakuck, for instance, to be like, hey, look, this is profitable plenty for us, you know, like, you know, there's, I'm just wondering about, you know, 35 and 70 in Heritage should be able to share that. Do we, or do we now, I mean, do we now wanna, I'm just like, if we're trying to make it more enticing for those, the Transwesterns, hey, look, the city has a site here, retail, this is how it performs.
Yeah, we don't collect the data of where our customers come from. We did for a little bit there.
We can't do like 70s.
But we, you could do it through license plate, but I guess, we were doing it through zip code. We were just asking people, let's use zip code.
Oh, yeah.
As they went through, I mean, we did that survey, I guess that six, seven years ago. We haven't done that lately.
Interesting.
We can do it through our memberships. We can look at our membership list and know what the addresses of them are. And that would be one resource, but...
I just had this assumption at Keyakuck that we're getting people from 20 communities, you know.
Yeah.
You know, further south.
That is a big draw. Yeah, they have a much bigger market area down there.
Can I just make sure I didn't miss hearing? Did you say students being released for lunch?
Yeah. I don't know if that's a thing, but if, in some school, you know, in some districts.
In some districts, they allow.
But it could be attractive for...
It's two thirds.
Yeah. Second lunch.
Yeah. And then the plan, you probably noticed, after each goal, there are success measures. And so that's really helpful for both Katie and I as we're doing this work as well as reporting to the EDC at the end of the year. With each goal, are we meeting the mark? And so Eller's trying to help us come with some tangible ways of tracking this to determine, you know, if we're satisfying these strategies and what can we do to, you know, make further improvements or, you know, alter the course. And again, what we want to use this for is having that annual development work plan so that we can evaluate it again in later this year into 2025. The BRE program will be the first major effort from this plan to roll out, and we're really excited to get that going. So there's definitely additional data. And then at the back, the appendix is some additional information about the different kinds of financing things that we're currently doing and that could be created.
Other questions, comments? Joshua? I wanted to start out with a few data questions before going into comments and questions about the actual goals and strategies. The first one being from page 11, looking at the industry breakdown on table four. Did you and the EDC talk about particular targets or areas of concerns of industries that you would like to target to attract to Lakeville?
We didn't dial in that deep. You know, we've been more intentional at trying to attract those industry, you know, more higher paying, higher tech, job creation versus, you know, when it comes to, you know, if a broker's calling us about a specific site where you wanna see here, trying to shy away from expanding more warehouse and distribution, but more focused on manufacturing, those kinds of things. But we didn't dial into any niches yet, like med tech or things of that nature.
Because the other thing I was looking at from comparison of tables four and five, that in comparison, when you're comparing Lakeville to Minnesota, some industries, we are under indexing in the number of businesses, but those same sectors are also over indexing in the number of employees that they're employing or vice versa. And so if we ever are getting down into using this data for targeting certain industries, I think that's kind of an interesting relationship that some of these industries have where, you know, we may be lower in the number of businesses, but they actually provide more employees or they have, you know, less employees but more businesses. So, and so are you saying that that's something that you're planning to do as part of this work?
Yep.
Then my other, my last data question is about page 12 talks, the narrative is suggesting that Lakeville residents commute, that we're not capturing commuters, but the number of in-home businesses or, you know, remote businesses is not really reflected in the data. And I know we've talked about this before, but how do we account for the economic impact of people who live and work from their house and, you know, are able to go to lunch, you know, on a lunch break or be able to shop immediately at five o'clock when their shift is over from their home? You know, where is that impact? And is that capturable as an attraction factor for Lakeville? Because I think that's a unique thing about our community. We're fast-growing, affluent, and I think part of that fluency is due to the types of jobs people have in tech that's not actually here.
Ready?
So, I don't know.
Yeah. I'm not sure, but I've got it noted.
I just, it's kind of a follow-up, and I was gonna ask a question about the number of people that live here and work here. Looks like about one out of every five people that works in Lakeville lives here, but I mean, Joshua's question is, is pertinent to that, does that, does that count the people that have a home business or is that just people that are community to and from? And to me, this has been an interesting thing since I've been on the council. And I mean, is there any strategy to help, you know, help people that wanna work here to live here because, I mean, a strong community is one where the people that do work there live there because the cash stays in, in Lakeville. I mean, if somebody's commuting out, they're gonna eat lunch in another community, they might have dinner in another community. Vice versa, if they're coming in here, they're gonna be doing the same thing here. And if they lived here, all that money would be captured right here in our community.
I think the census, if I'm correct, does a home-based business number. I don't have a top name, maybe.
Yeah.
I think the number exists. I feel like I've seen this.
I'll just, I'll do some digging, see what I can find.
That's, that's probably still proprietor versus ordinary employee. Right, right. There's no remote employee number. No. But it should be. It would benefit us.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you know.
Yeah.
Because the other, the other talking point that I think we brought up more too is that you can't, you can't work and live here because the salaries, the average salaries don't match the home values in a way that makes sense economically, but it's working for so many families that there has to be another factor out there that's...
Yeah. And two-person.
Two-person, right.
Two people working.
Right.
Yeah.
There's other questions. I did have another question about EDAs. So does, within EDA, are we saying that the EDC becomes an EDA as the authority body?
Doesn't have to. There's lots of ways. Jump in, Tammy, when I speak on this. Some cities have both. Burnsville, for example, has an EDA and an EDC. So the EDC continues to do the work like our commission does and develop programs and outreach and those kinds of things, while I believe their EDA is their council. It's most common that the EDA is the council. It doesn't have to be. It can be, you know, the bylaws can be established either way. So that would be something that we would certainly have to make some decisions on. Yeah. It's not so much what you call it, it's the powers that you give it. Most cities in the metro, whether they call it, most call it an economic development authority, give their EDAs the powers of the Housing Redevelopment Authority, the HRA and the EDA. Those are different authorities under state law. So we, right now, Lakeville has just given the HRA, your Housing Redevelopment Authority, the powers of the HRA, but I'm not certain of that, where we will find that resolution. It may be at some point in time, even though it called themselves, not themselves, the city council has called it the HRA. Your HRA may have the powers of the EDA just because of some of the authority that you've used for issuance of bonds, but I do not know that. But that can be affirmed by looking at the enabling resolution for the HRA. So council member, to answer your question, doesn't matter so much what you call it, you get to decide. Tina is correct. A lot of cities choose to appoint themselves the council as the members of the EDA. And in my experience, why many city councils choose that is if they're giving taxing authority. And if I may, Tina, under the levy when that was discussed, the EDA levy is actually levied by the city council and appropriated to whether it's the EDA or HRA, whatever you call it. I know that because that shows up on the tax statement under the city line item. If you levy under the Housing Redevelopment Authority levy, which is a separate statute, separate authority, and Tina gave you the dollar amounts, that shows up separately on the tax statement as a special taxing jurisdiction. There's a lot of cities that levy both the EDA and HRA, some do one or the other. That is the decision of the city council.
And how is that, where are the pros and cons to doing it that way as opposed to including it in a general levy that the city is already doing it and putting a special line item for these initiatives?
That is a great question. If you're doing the EDA levy, it's really a policy decision that the effect of that levy is the exact same whether you levy it as the general fund and then use the dollars for economic development purposes or you levy under the EDA authority. It comes into play more when levy limits were in place. It's been many years since the legislature has put levy limits in place. An EDA levy and an HRA levy are special levies that traditionally have been exempt from levy limits when those have been in place.
Has this information gone before the finance committee, even though it's a...
Not yet.
It should.
No. It was, the idea was to introduce it here as part of this plan as kind of the first step as one of the goals, and then as we continue through implementing this plan, certainly, yeah, finance committee would have to be involved.
Another question I had is, it seemed like some of the initiatives that were listed are things that either the chamber is doing, partially doing or wants to do.
Within the...
With retention and attraction of businesses to Lakeville.
Yeah. I think we partner really well with the chamber on a lot of that. Chamber does, you know, has their role, you know, from, you know, that would be, you know, those activities will continue no matter what, whether or not we were able to create some internal financing tools or not. Those internal financing tools that could be created from a levy would be then specific to directly assist businesses, whether that's attracting a new business because you have a pot of money to assist with an infrastructural improvement or whether it's a smaller pot of money that you could attract a restaurant maybe in their SAC fees, those kinds of things. So it enhances the ability for business attraction. It's not necessarily the end-all, be-all, but it certainly enhances that. Just like, you know, when we got injured into TIF deals, that has certainly gotten projects past the finish line. So it's just creating that toolbox to get projects through the finish line.
Yeah, I think like North St. Paul didn't have a single Sedona restaurant or something like that. They only had one.
Are there models where some, a levy through an EDA is also supporting the chamber? Or am I thinking about that relationship?
I think those are two separate relationships.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've not seen it, but it would be strictly supporting our programs.
So are you telling me that you would not go to finance committee until you had some direction from the city council and some of these ideas of possibly implementing, let's say the EDA or whatever, instead of getting, I guess, my thought process is I wanted the information to go to sooner if they're EDA gone, helping us make a decision.
Yeah. And I'm not trying to sidestep that at all. We just wrapped up this plan with these goals. So we presented this at our last EDC meeting, the end of August, and here we are, you know, psycho, you know, present this plan in its entirety to the council, not just that one element, but the whole plan.
And I'm not trying to say you are sidestepping. It was just my interpretation of how I heard your answer when I asked the question.
Yeah. Yeah. But no, we could certainly meet with them.
If my finance committee would like to be involved in these kinds of, especially this one, but others as well, at a much earlier stage so that as concepts are being discussed and decisions are made to prepare this kind of...
decisions are made to prepare this kind of presentation, that, um, that we have a discussion with whoever is working on the, on the projects.
But just so I'm clear, I mean, we're not talking about this stuff until the business retention plan is.
Yeah.
This is like several steps away before we get into levy. And for instance, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, right?
It was.
I know, but the, I, okay, maybe I misunderstood you. But the point is, you would have liked to have had it in the document to have this information out there.
Yes, and in fact, even before that, as discussions were taking place, um, so that, uh, that we would be, uh, a partner in it early on. Uh, and then, uh, obviously, uh, as a draft of this presentation is putting, put together, that, uh, that we could have some input in that as well.
So they probably need more joint meetings to the EDC and the finance committee.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this effort was honestly just, it was an effort of the economic development commission. Um, they were charged with creating this plan. Um, they developed through all of their inputs since April, developed five goals. That's one of them. There's four other important goals that will work towards in all of these efforts. So it was the, you know, that was the intentionality of the economic development commission creating this plan. This is an update to a plan that expires this year, so, um, we extended this one out to cover the next four years.
It makes sense to me that this would be an EDA function. We haven't quite gotten to the point where, what is the financial impact of?
Right.
Of this yet. So I, I do think that this is the point to, I'm sure, bring in the finance committee to figure out, okay, what are the financial options then? And how does that impact long-term planning? So I'm not, I'm not sure that this is out of order at all, or, no, actually, we're in the right place.
Oh, you know, the thing is, is you could also suggest to the finance committee, is this out of order? Well, I mean, you know, let them determine whether or not they felt that they should have been involved more before this. So, does that make sense? I'm trying to say. I think.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think the important thing to remember that, that finance committee is a recommending body to the council. And I think it's the council's responsibility to take a look at long-term policies or proposed policies by staff and then determine, okay, what subcommittees need to look at this before they make a final decision on it. So I think it's really the responsibility of council to say, hey, finance committee, we're at a certain point now that we think we need to involve you. We're going to ship it down to you to take a look at. So I just want to be careful that we're.
Okay.
I just want to be careful that we're not, council's not granting permission to a subcommittee to start making decisions before council really has made any decisions.
No, and so that, um, so I'm not making myself clear enough on that point. It's just that because these committees are in the advisory, I just want to make sure that they have a chance to really get into information that's going to affect long-term the city in their advisory capacities and not be totally influenced by, well, what is the council thing? Some of that, the, some of the reason you have a, an advisory is because you're trying to get outside advice versus just our own advice. Or, or our own decisions. Does that make sense? So I'm not trying to say, um, I, I guess, whatever point you just made, because it's like mud in my head right now. I don't have a clear head today. I apologize. Um, that's not the point that I'm trying to make. It, it, I'm trying to make sure that as a council, we're making very informed decisions as we move forward based on the information, some of the information we receive as advice from our committees.
Yeah, I, I don't, for me, I mean, I don't think we're anywhere down the line of having an EDA, HRA, levy conversation where we would want finance and thinking about long-term.
It's just that once it got set in goals, that's when they may be nervous. Does that make sense? Because somebody's determined that, you know, it's part of a goal.
Tina, can you bring that particular one back up and just take a look at that? And maybe there's an opportunity just to, I don't want to.
I'm done.
He's possessed.
I want to edit by committee here.
Oh, seriously.
Maybe it's a.
So is it goal?
Goal one.
It's goal one, one A. It says create an economic development authority, EDA and implement.
It's gone again. It's like possessed, guys.
How about we just put investigate in there?
There.
Yeah.
Put there be more comfort level there.
Well, it is explore and show resources, but it does say in, implement.
Yeah.
Just trying to.
I mean, that way it's.
So you see the first one, implement, um, housing, HRA levy, create economic development authority and implement levy. We could say, um, explore the creation of an EDA and implementation of a levy.
And why does the implementation?
This is a four-year document.
How often will the document get updated? Every year?
No, no, we would evaluate, establish a work plan, um, and set success measures for the work plan, um, and can share that, you know, result of that accomplishments at the end of every year with the council. But historically, what the city has done is a three-year strategic plan and then updated every three years. We extended this one out four years. So it wouldn't be updated for another four years.
Oh. I think Tammy, Tammy made a, a good point in that the time that a lot of these were set up was back when there were limits that were established by the, by the state legislature. And, um, so that's one of the things I think that, that, that we would like to, as a finance committee, um, be involved in, in those kinds of thinking of this too. Because this is, this is another major change in the tax policy or the revenue policy of the, of the city. And, um, and our charter, uh, for the finance committee involves, uh, policy is one of the considerations that is, has listed um, as far as advisory activity. Um, so I think that there, rather than waiting, uh, to a point where we would then be asked to look at some specific, uh, aspect of something, uh, it, it's much better if, um, uh, if we are involved earlier in the discussions and, uh, are, um, part of the team, part of the partnerships that, that are worked on as things like this develop. Rather than someone, rather than a committee that we would just, uh, have a, a go-to kind of a question later on, uh, as, uh, decisions are, are being made. It's very clear to us, always has been, that the decisions about, uh, how the city, uh, is run are with the city council. And we've been very careful in our meetings and in our thinking that we don't ever step over that line. That's, 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 that's the most important line is that it's really up to you to make the decisions. But on the other hand, we think that there's, with the amount of expertise that we do have on the finance committee, uh, that we could be, um, uh, better involved, uh, from a professional standpoint and, and work, um, with you, but, uh, through, um, Julie and, uh, Justin. And, uh, work in partnership with Tammy, um, and the bond council work that, that they do as well. Um, so, um, that would be, um, would be our, our thought about, um, our involvement in things like this.
So to the rest, to you guys, I'm not saying that I have, um, that I'm like totally against something. I'm just trying to make sure where we jump in or even, even have the train keep going down the track. Because at this point, when you say implement, you put it on the track and it's going forward. Okay. So I, I just, I want to feel more comfortable with this decision than I did the finances. So our franchisees, if that makes sense.
I think you're appropriate in bringing it up here. I think we are at that point. I, I, I don't think the finance committee should, you know, be, it's not a fair expression to go, you know, peruse the work of the other commissions unless it's a charge from the council. So I mean, I, I, I agree with Joshua's point. I think we're at that point where, to send it to the finance committee for funds as well and any consequences or something we're not considering.
But I, I would welcome change in the language on the action. From a more explore.
Yeah, I, I think anything in here should be explore, um, until we've given that direction. And the other thing that you talked about this, Tina, there's a lot of short-term here. Almost anything that isn't currently ongoing, the majority is short-term. Um, which to me communicates to the next year or two. And I don't know even with capacity, with everything that we have going on. And you go back to your slide about priorities and resources. I'd like to hear more about how those short-term things are going to change as you decide. This is really what we have the capacity to work on right now. Um, and I, you know, I get, I see the goals. Um, I'd like to hear, uh, something about overall, like, if, if by doing this, I really want to achieve this and maybe achieve this and this. Um, so I think, I think there just needs to be some work even on the time. And, and I'm trying to figure out our actual, I mean, I see goals. I guess I'd like to see more on priorities.
Yeah.
Um, and the other piece is, um, I think anytime that we've started, like, like, uh, we've heard is, this is a pretty clear thing to create an EDA and implement a levy. And I do think we're at the point where a finance committee, uh, should be in on that and should be participating in. Um, I do want to make sure we don't muddy the waters and have, you know, committees work together. Um, but I would assume that each the EDA and finance committee might have, you know, a set of recommendations based on their expertise. I don't know.
And I think part of the conversation in the EDC often is, you know, we're, we're still in growth mode. Next 10 years, we're going to be starting to have more thoughtful conversations about redevelopment in particular, because as we all know. So I think we're way ahead of the game having a conversation now about setting ourselves up for in 2030, 2034. We're not in a situation where we're scrambling to try to chase down the next business because we don't have tools.
To me, that's a priority is to set us up for just what the mayor said. You know, less where are we going to be in 2027 and more where are we going to be in 2030, 2032.
I don't, I don't know if you have it here though, but there are some comparable cities that have pretty healthy balances. And we don't. And now some of them, Medina is, is mostly focused all on housing and there's very robust. But that is, you know, if you had a request, we, we wouldn't be able to do it and some of the neighborhood series would. I don't, do you have that slide in here?
Anytime this been fully built out for home?
Yeah.
Yeah. And part of that's tip pooling and other resources.
So it's, it's thinking about all the different tools that are going to be available for that.
Yeah.
At that point, we have them.
Yeah.
So that's why I think it's good to.
There's some, there's some of these initiatives, uh, can they create revenue? To grow the pool of funds that are available?
Revolving loan funds can be set up that way.
So that they're lower interest rates, but it does help provide more funding in the future.
There's probably others that can, depending on how they're established.
And the one other thing to consider is, we decided as a council to partner with the county on each area. So we could decide to go back on that at some point and have pool for that type of resources.
My, my sense with this is that, I mean, in terms of the initiatives for how we should be growing the economy and, and the initiatives there, I appreciate the work that's been done here. I think the, the ideas for how to fund those initiatives are, I think, now on paper. But I'd like to see the finance committee now review this, not necessarily, because I, I wouldn't want us at this point in time to try to tweak the language. This is the EDC's str- strategic plan proposal. I'd like to see that go through one other committee before making any sort of tweaks to the language and then have another conversation about it. And how I'd like to see that go. Particularly with.
Do we ever vote on this plan?
Have in the past.
Typically.
Probably adopted it versus.
Yeah, typically what we do with these, um, longer range or strategic plans is the doc, uh, the council just accepts a report and council meeting. It's just that they don't adopt it, they don't, but they just accept the, some middle of the report. What we did with the mission, like, well, there was no adoption of it. It's just that the city recognizes it, accepts it. Part of their full list of different range planning documents. I just do want to caution, or maybe control expectations a little bit. There's a, there's some work that Tina and her group need to do yet with this whole EDC, EDA concept. Tammy's, you know, looking at some information for us too. So I just don't want everyone walking away tonight going, oh, this is going to go, this is going to go to the finance committee now. I think we need to do some internal work yet.
Yep.
On this a little bit, really kind of flesh things out a little bit. And then maybe we'll come back to council one more time and say, this is the, what we're kind of finding out about this stuff to inform you a little bit. And then we can go to finance after that, if that's the direction. I just want to, this was just put in a document in my, in my opinion right now. And we just need to now flesh it out a little bit to really see if this is the direction we want to go. And then finance can take a look at it from there.
And in the meantime, we can work on softening that language, um, making it, you know, more exploratory. And then, um, to council member Bernal's suggestion, dial in on what the timelines mean and top priorities. And maybe try and schedule some of those out and share that back with Justin and get his thoughts on getting it back in front of you.
Any other comments before we move on? Thank you, Tina.
Oh, I was just going to say, I'm more comfortable with that because these are all action items that our staff are going to be working on as goals and then tracking the measures. And if, if we're not, as a council, wanting to go with that goal, we should, at some point or another, we needed to have input before it's adopted, that we're not, that's not a goal that we accept. So, I mean, I realize you're telling me all these processes, but what I'm trying to figure out is when, when is the right time to insert, uh, you know, our, uh, authority before it gets into a hard document? So that's all, that's all I'm trying to figure out. I'm not trying to say anything's bad or whatever else. I'm trying to get to the point where, you know, I'm comfortable that what's moving forward is what we wanted to move.
Yeah, and I think that's what this was for, the winter. I mean, even though Tina had final on this, I don't, I don't prefer to see this in the final document. I think we had needed to have this discussion first. Tina can go back and tweak it. And then that can be kind of the final version. So.
All right.
I think we're kind of on the same page.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, flip it over to Julie. Tammy also. Our long-term financial management plan update.
So, um, I'll just give a little introduction here before we jump, Tammy, um, go through the slides. Um, so in 2020, August 2020, there was a whole 99 page report that was compilation of this long, long-term financial planning. Basically is two very large spreadsheets. So there's one that's just debt. And then there's the other piece that's capital improvements and our funding sources and all that. So it's the marrying up of these two. I've never seen such large spreadsheets before in my life. I'm not kidding, like 300 tabs on these spreadsheets. So they're very robust. A year ago in finance, because every year we've been updating this model, Northland created it for us in 2020. They've been working with us, finance staff have updated these two pieces together or finance staff has done it alone. A year ago, we knew that we were going to be buried in our E R P implementation. So we said, hey, Northland, you know, we knew. We need your help more so on this year's report and updating these numbers because we would not have the resources to do it ourselves, all by ourselves. So we set a budget amount to, you know, Northland, we could get them to do this. Been working with them over the spring and the summer and, and we've got, we gave them our C I P from August 26. When that was first given to council. So that was put into the model through them. Then we had some tweaks because we realized that the $2 million ladder truck that we would order in 2026, we wouldn't be paying for it until 2030 when we actually get it. It takes four years to build it. So still changes coming through even after that August 26 work session. So this has very, been very fast and furious. Trying to get through our staff review of what they've put into the models, making sure we're matching up and everything. We've used the model every year. When we come to council at that November work session, say, okay, here's how things are shaping up. And any changes in the levy and here's what our tax rate looks like going out. Based on those, the C I P changes, anything that, everything that's. Been modified up to that point, we use it then as a tool to say, okay, here's, and then page five, and I'll just upload up here. This is. This is the report that you've gotten every November, just this one page. And that does come from this long-term model. It's a nice summary to give you an idea. Where things are at as far as our tax capacity rate and the change in our tax capacity rate. Just a little bit better. Tricky. But anyway, so that, that's the basis of how this all shaped up over this, these last few months. Again, it's a tool that we use to help us decide, determine, okay, what's, what's a comfortable. Change in our, in our rate, in our tax capacity rate. So. But this time around, we wanted to have. Northland giving you an idea of some other, you know, some of the factors. I mean, all of these factors are behind the scenes that the. Factors, the assumptions are behind the scenes. We create them and work in tandem with economic development. Hey, this is in our history of how much, how was new housing units come in every year. So that's behind the scenes. And we see the progressions like, okay, this is how many. We feel comfortable with, which is going to give you a conservative but realistic. Expectation of those assumptions. We build those into the model. Again, same thing with salaries, personnel costs. We see the, the projection of how it's gone in the past few years. We know what's coming up with fire personnel. Those kinds of things are built into the model. To help give us as realistic picture as we can at this point in time. Realizing things could change this. We well know. Dime, you know, letting limits or. Recession. And but the, I mean, then that's the point where wanting to make sure you understand the budget and the C I P. The C I P is a planning tool as well, but the budget, whenever you determine a budget, that's, that's the council's hard decision point right there, you know. And we have flexibility with the budget. Thankfully, you know, even if, say, we adopt a budget right now and then we bam, get hit with a recession and housing stops, we have the ability to let staff go. If that were, I mean, we saw it happen in 2009. So that, that's why, keeping in mind this is a tool that we use. And a lot of time does go into it and it's not, and it's teamwork. So with that, Tammy.
Good evening. From Northland. Tammy, I'm Val from Northland Public Finance. Nice to be before you this evening. Thank you for those opening comments. So there is no, as I get ready to present some of the information that was in the technical memo, there is no action by city council tonight. This is a snapshot in time, looking at the results of the model based upon certain assumptions. Before I get into reviewing information, I also want to comment, Lakeville has a long history of long-term finance planning. In 2020, yes, Northland came in and maybe helped make the tools more robust. And I think we gave the city at the time, and I presented on almost 100-page report. But that wasn't, that Lakeville had not done long-term finance planning, excuse me. It was, the models became a little bit more robust and we gave a comprehensive look. So the only thing different and why I'm here before you this evening is what Julie said, because of other pressures on city staff. City staff and the city asked for some assistance from Northland this year in updating the model. That's another reason why you don't have a full report. This isn't that you're adopting a plan. It's at a point in time. Given certain assumptions. What the revenue would need to be. And then we estimate city tax rates based upon assumptions that Tina's office helps provide to your finance staff. And was shared with Northland on development. This will not be what happens in 2026. This will not be what happens in 27. But what I do want you to take away from the information I share with you is some feedback for Julie that. These are based upon your other plans, your cap improvement plan, your staffing plans. So as you see this and you look at this, this is. An opportunity, not just this meeting, but in weeks to come to say to staff, as I look at the snapshot of this information that was shared with us, that's not acceptable. I don't agree with where that levy is going or those rates. And it's not a matter of saying, well, something was wrong in the planning. It was. Maybe your capital improvement plan you want to tweak, maybe the staffing plans, maybe you think staff, you're being too conservative in your assumptions for development. So if I could speak for Julie, I think that's why this is on the agenda this evening is for some of that feedback and not that you're adopting a plan. So a few things, Julie said, this is not your budget. So what is up here is assumptions for those future years. You make your decisions when you adopt your budget. I do want to highlight on, it's in your pack at page 37 of 56 or page three of the Northland memo. I want to quickly go through some of these assumptions because these are the key ones. But tonight, not to speak to disagree or agree, but you can certainly give feedback because this is not a static point in time. Staff is constantly updating this. And you might say, I would wish that staff would be more conservative or less conservative. So let me just go through those and highlight. So the general fund tax levy is assumed to increase that amounts needed to support planned spending. So your staffing plans and reserves. That's an important point because reserves, you have a fund balance policy for the general fund. And so we didn't bring you up 100-page report, but you should know that when you look at this and you look at that general fund levy that was on the page that was just up, you don't need to turn there. That reflects not only levy to pay for expenditures after accounting for non-tax revenue. It also accounts for increase in levy to ensure that the city maintains its fund balance policy. In reality, what happens is that in most years, you don't actually end up levying for that. Some more mature cities do have to levy for that. But what happens in Lakeville is staff is a little bit more conservative on building permits and other revenues. And you have growth in fund balance from actual financial performance. But as Lakeville continues to mature, that may not be the case every year. And like other mature, more mature communities, you may find yourself having to levy property taxes. To ensure that you maintain the fund balance at the appropriate level pursuant to your policy. General fund non-tax revenue, traditionally including when staff is in that, those assumptions have been conservative. So that's all other revenue in the governmental funds that is not tax levy. So 1% to 2%. Non-personnel costs at 2% to 3%. This is a long-term plan, 10 years. In the near term, is 2% or 3% sufficient for that assumption? No. But in the, over a 10-year, as Julie noted, there could be a recession. There could be. Other things that historically that you may not be facing down, 5%, 7% increase that has been more in recent years. For personnel costs at 3.5%. Certainly there may be years that you're higher than that as you adjust to the market. And there may be years that maybe you're not as high as that. So that is a very long-term view at 3.5%. That isn't meant to be for negotiation of contracts or anything like that. It's just simply saying, here's an assumption that a personnel cost grew at 3.5% on top of your staffing plans. Taxable market value of property in the city is conservatively projected for planning purposes to increase by 2% annually. This isn't new construction. This is for base. Well, we can all look at our tax statements in more recent years. Those increases were higher than 2%. You might say, well, that's not realistic. But here we're trying to be conservative. We're not trying to say that underlying value of property is going to go up by 7%, 10% a year. So that is a conservative assumption. Tax capacity from new construction is estimated to average approximately 2.5 million annually increased between 2025 and 2033. That's not value. That's tax capacity for purposes of calculating the tax rate. That is informed by the assumptions from the community development department. And again, probably a little conservative as we look at them from historical, but this is very long-term. Some positive news on the tax increment financing districts. You've talked about that in your agenda item prior. You have some districts that are coming off. You had TIP 10 that came off. Was it two years ago? And you have some more. So we factor that in. That is success of those districts and resulting increase in general tax base for not only the city of Lakeville. The school district and the county enjoy that increase as well. Fiscal disparities, that is the tax base sharing program throughout the metro. Here, we are conservative on that assumption as well. We don't know. It's not just what happens in Lakeville. It's what happens across the metro area that participates. Getting to the last four bullet points on page three of the memo. And these should be numbers that you've seen. Total capital spending of approximately 390 million in the governmental funds. This does not include the water, sewer, storm or lighting enterprise funds. This is just the governmental between 2025 and 2033. That's based upon the most recent C I P that I believe the city council has seen. Not all of that C I P can be funded from non-tax revenue or without bonding. The franchise fee revenue that was adopted by the city will be very helpful as that ramps up for some smaller pay go. But that franchise fee revenue planned to be used to pay debt service on the public safety facility. And the planned fire station improvements over the next several years. That approximately 5 million, 5.1 million, we were conservative and kept that constant, meaning you should see some growth in that estimate of franchise fee. But we kept that constant. But that revenue is projected to be sufficient to cover 100% of the debt circus on those facilities. Total new bond issuance of approximately 140 million between 2025 and 2033. Debt service on the existing outstanding bonds and new bonds is planned to be supported by a combination of tax levying, franchise fee, special assessment, among other sources, but with those being the largest. Point up here will be before you on the issuance of bonds related to those facilities. And I believe this council's aware of this. You cannot issue franchise fee bonds. You will issue bonds that will have alleged tax levy and the city will annually be able to cancel that tax levy using that franchise, franchise fee revenue. And then the last bullet point, and I know you're very familiar with franchise fee revenue, so I won't go into that. Now I would just like to touch on a few of the slides that are in here. And again, this is a snapshot of much more detailed information that is available to city staff. So if you could go to exhibit one. So here on the tax levies. Here we've made some assumptions and why you see, and there will be a chart here in a moment, that change in that tax levy from year to year, especially if you look at year 27 to 28. And that relatively flat, and you might say, you don't recall a year that it was that way. That's because of the timing of when the city is planning staff. On levying for pay go for certain capital, the equipment, the trails, there's some change in park improvement. City staff has not recommended to city council that you bond for everything, that where you can plan for some pay go, that's reflected in your C I P. Your C I P plans is reflected in that levy. And that's why in particular, that year, you see that change. So this, a lot of numbers on this sheet of paper. All this is trying to do is to summarize tax levy. Net tax capacity. So net tax capacity based upon what your current tax base is. That assumption of that 2% growth in underlying values plus new construction that we're modeling for single-family, multifamily and commercial property. Which gets you to the tax capacity ring and the changes. Why the higher, and here I'm going to have you just go to this exhibit two. The increases, and you've seen this in recent years, in the city's tax rate in the near term is being driven in large part due to the park referendum. When those bonds were issued, and I was before the city council, we talked about prior to the law changing in recent years. In the past, that would have shown up separately as a levy, a market referendum levy. That is not how it works since 2008, I think it was. Instead, it's part of your overall levy that staff presents to you and certify and gets spread over your tax base, the same as the general fund levy. That is a little bit more challenging to communicate that to the public because they don't have a line on their tax statement that says city referendum. And you could say, that's the park referendum. That's the park referendum impact included in there. And I know staff has given you details on that as you look at actually adopting the budget. The other piece that I would note, maybe to slow down here a little bit, the orange line is the annual percent change in total tax levy. Gray line is the annual percent change in tax rate. And that's what impacts the taxpayers. From year to year, as you're working on your budget, you work with your staff to try to minimize that or move things around in order to adjust that. That's possible to a degree, but the park referendum impact just being what it was, that is more challenging because those bonds are being issued and there's some structuring of them. But it's really once those bonds are issued, then you start to return to normal, what I would describe as a more normal annual percent change in your city tax rate as a result of that. On the next exhibit three. Here's just graphically, here's the change. And what I would point out here, this is an example in city council seeing this. In 2027, a response should be, or could be, you know, staff, we want to work on that. We don't like this, that we go up and that we go down. What can we do to? Maybe we don't always issue debt with leveling payments. Maybe we structure this, which means you may incur some additional interest expense because you're pushing out principal. But there are cities that choose to do that, that they manage that tax rate and they say, we're willing to incur a little bit more in interest expense, for example, in order to moderate our levy increases in our tax rate. We have made no such assumption here. It's simply level annual payment. And this is given the assumptions, what those tax rates would be. You're not adopting this. You will give direction to the city staff when you do your annual budgets. On the next exhibit four. Here it's just graphing out the total city tax levy for all city funds. And it's showing you in the yellow, the general fund portion. The green being capital funds, meaning where you're actually levying current taxes to pay for projects and the blue being debt service. There's that jump from 26 to 27. In particular, I would point to the debt service. Again, some opportunity there to maybe structure the debt differently, but that comes with the cost. The more you push out some of that principal, but. There are many cities, that's what they choose to do because they try to avoid the peaks and valleys. Exhibit five and six, these are just points in time and they are ranging from 250, very low for Lakeville to half a million. I think your current on the county for preliminary pay five is, I have it somewhere here, it's like 448. You can double the, the half a million to get to a million dollar residential because anything over 500,000, their tax capacity class rate is the same. So you can double that. Anything below that 386 is still gets the market value exclusion. So here's just a point in time, speaking of the model, staff can plug in whatever number you want on valuation. On commercial on the next page. There. I'll just keep going so we don't slow down. There's a chart in there that same thing, graphs outs, this is city only taxes. This is not the other taxing jurisdictions. Just graphs it out. And here you can size it up or down. You can multiply the 4 million times two and that would be an $8 million property because. Commercial taxes at that 2% of value for purposes of calculating their tax capacity. So again, you see that rise. So again, you see that rise here, not because you're adding a bunch of staff and other things. There's some of that, that's largely driven by the park referendum debt that is coming online. It's not driven by the fire stations or by the public safety facility. Because that debt will be paid by the franchise fee revenue and not property taxes. The next two charts, exhibit seven and eight, just give you some graphing of ending cash. Here, the only thing to point to, there is some planned use you're building up, have built up, especially in the trunk funds and the spend down of that on the improvements to the treatment facility. So capital project funds, yes, you do have that up and down. Why we even put this in here is frankly, some cities, especially where the direction is no bonding, demonstrate sometimes that cash goes negative. Because they are saying no bonding, but we want to have this levy to demonstrate. That's not true for Lakeville. Lakeville, these funds remain in sound financial condition. You've built up cash through the collection of those charges for service, those trunk funds, for example. And you plan to spend those, all very healthy from a financial position. On exhibit eight, crazy slide here, but again, this just breaks down that capital cash in more detail. And the big driver here of that change is the utility trunk funds. You have that cash and I'm sure when your auditors present, Julie, she talks about those ending balances. And you're still adding to that, but you have plans in your CIP to spend that down. And you are in a healthy financial position in order to do that. There's no projected negative cash here with respect to the city's capital improvement plan. Exhibit nine. This is just graphing out your CIP and I'm sure staff gives it to you in various forms. But what I want to highlight here is the big drivers, the facility improvements in green, which includes public safety and fire station. Those, while there will be bonding related to those, because you don't have cash on hand, there are besides that you don't pay for it. That's where your franchise fee revenue is coming into play in order to support that. 100% is projected and currently, because we're in talking with staff conservative, but we believe conservatively projecting that franchise fee revenue. It is very likely that you will have additional franchise fee revenue that you will not need to use to cover debt service on those projects. And you will be able to program that for whatever purpose the city council deems to be appropriate.
You can go to that. And the intent and the way we built this is that we would actually, any franchise fee revenue in addition to the principal and interest payments on the bonds would actually be used to lower the par amount of the bonds that we issue. For like future fire remodels, you know, and that's the intent.
Yes, the timing of what you're going to collect that franchise fee revenue in advance of a few of the projects. And then the plan is then use that to reduce the amount of bonds that you're being issued, that will be issued. Here's a snapshot of the source of funds. And this is just your capital improvement plan, and I know you've seen this in other formats. But here there is bonding planned. And so this would be an example, and I'm not saying to say this, but you can give staff feedback either now or later to say, you know, we saw the CFP, we saw that. I just don't feel comfortable that we're bonding every year. What are some strategies not to do that? That becomes a challenge without moving around the CIP. And frankly, the council did address that to a large degree when you considered the adoption of the franchise fee revenue as a new source of revenue versus putting all of that on the tax levy. Exhibit 11, this is the planned new bond issuance by fund. And we have the MSA fund, which there is no planned bonding, the building fund, the improvement, construction fund and the equipment fund. I know you may not often think of it like this, but your staff keeps all this in separate buckets. And really what I want you to take away from this one is the majority of that bonding between 2025 and 2033 is the building fund, the facility improvements. As you well know from your many meetings to reading the CIP. Getting to the end here, we're on exhibit 12. Now from talking about bonding to debt service. So debt service simply means principal and interest payments for existing and planned new debt. Based upon the city's most recent CIP, so we know change that, which of course there really changes. It has the city debt service, principal and interest payments peaking in year 2030 at just under $25 million. So that's not levy, but total principal and interest payments from all sources, not including the enterprise funds. There's currently, you don't have the same planned bonding for water operating sewer operating funds as you do in other mental funds. The majority of this would be general obligation debt fund. On the right, those categories may seem a little strange to you. I would just want to speak to those that are upon which the authority for the issuance of the bonds. So the majority of it being debt that is fully supported or wholly supported by tax levy. This includes the debt that would be issued for the facilities where you must by law pledge tax levy, but you'd be canceling. So we don't call it GO. GO stands for general obligation bonds franchise fee because we don't have authority to issue franchise fee bonds. You have authority to issue it under the GO. The source of revenue for debt service. Here you can see that breakdown on the pledge. It does not include the enterprise funds of property tax, intergovernmental, special assessments, investment income and other revenue. And then the use of cash from the fund, which you also have some plans for doing. And that includes the franchise fee revenue, where you'll be transferring that into the debt service funds and using that cash. Exhibit 14, this is just graphically, and this is just at a point in time from the long range plan that shows the existing debt in green, so that debt is already issued and outstanding. And you can see it going like this, and that's just the amortization because you're paying down rapidly paying down that principal. The blue is the planned new debt, so that continues to increase until you get through your, the next, between now and 2029 issuance of bonds. And then your CIP doesn't have large facility improvements after it's front loaded. Then you start to see under the blue as well, that amortization and the repayment of that new debt that will be issued.
On that slide.
Yeah.
We don't have capital improvement plans, like 43.
This is the debt, so this is the debt outs, excuse me, this is the debt outstanding on exhibit 14, total debt outstanding. So you do have debt still outstanding projected by year 2043. But you are correct that your capital improvement plan goes out to 2034, I believe.
In terms of projecting new debt beyond that, this chart could be a little misleading that our debt's going to be dropping that far, but there will be an additional debt most likely.
This is still outstanding.
Yes, total outstanding, but he is correct. And you'd be saying, well, Tammy, as we issue debt and let's just say in 2035, as we keep adding on it, that the chart would look different. That is absolutely correct, but we didn't make any assumption on what that new debt might be past year 2034.
So just for me visually, it probably chopped off the right to one third of that chart. If I want to kind of have a more realistic sense of where we're going to be. Because everything after that, just there's no plan for debt at this point.
Correct, or some, and we're not trying to fill this in with new debt, but you think of it, it's reach that 200 million, you know, or how does that get filled in? And the next one is the same, if you go to exhibit 15, this is the exact same information. But I know a few years ago, the finance mission prefers to see it this way. So this is just showing you the green line being projected debt. And here the colors are flipped, so stay with me. That's total projected debt and the dollar amounts and the blue line being existing debt. So here you just, same chart, you're just looking at it with the line. And I think some just visually see that a little bit differently. Tax levy for debt service. And here council member, this kind of, let me explain the chart and then I'll come back to your comment there. So the blue is tax levy for existing debt. This is actual projected, so this already accounts for the franchise fee revenue. That isn't, even though when the bonds are issued, you're going to have to pledge tax levy. You won't actually levy it, so this reflects that only taxes that we estimate you'd actually have to levy. So the blue is for existing debt, the green is for levy for planned new debt, where you issue new bonds. So you peak in year 2028 at just under 16 million. An example would be, and some cities do that, they say, we're going to set a total tax levy for debt service and we're not going to exceed that. So staff, when you, when we issue new bonds, we want you to structure around that. So under that scenario, beginning in 29 and 2030, any news, as you, your CFP goes out, you fill that in, but you don't go above that 16 million. We're not asking the council to make that decision tonight, I mean, that is a comment, sometimes that's what cities do. We are getting to the end here. What I, why we included this chart is we want to show you that for now, this plan reflects relatively level annual debt service. And what does that mean? That means that your rate, how quickly you're paying off principal on existing and new debt is fairly state, projected to be fairly stable in this plan. So at about the 10-year amortization, you've been and are projected to be at about 70%. So at any given time, you're about 70% of your debt is being amortized in the upcoming 10 years. This is very helpful to the city's AAA rating. So if you said to staff, well, we do need to issue debt, we need to do these projects, but we don't like this levy. We want you to extend out the term of these bonds, rather than 10 years, we want you to do 20 years hypothetically. While that would help you with your levy, having a lower levy, it would not help you with your bond rating because the amortization of your debt would take longer and that is not a credit positive. Not that you make policy decisions just related to your AAA, but that is a consideration should you ever decide to do that. The last chart is the debt per capita for existing and planned new debt, does not include the enterprise funds. The blue line is debt per capita. This is just taking total debt spread over estimated population, and I emphasize estimated because we're factoring growth based upon Tina's staff and their projections for that. So again, we are showing that your debt per capita will increase even with growth in the city. That is largely due to the park referendum in addition to the facility bonds that will be issued. So your debt per capita will grow, but then, council member, this comes into play again, your comment. We show that quickly am going down. It'll depend on decisions to be made over the next 10, 15, 20 years on what other projects. But it also, we don't know what will your population be. I know, I don't mean it like that, of course you plan for it, but what will it actually be in comparison to your debt to be determined? With that, that is the last exhibit. There's a lot more information in the plan that staff uses for purposes of informing your decisions on the CIP and the budget. Tonight was really meant to have me come and just give you a snapshot of the results of that planning. So with that, I'm done with presenting to you and happy for having to answer any questions or feedback that you want to offer to staff.
There does the news for tonight fall into the debt salary most likely. Or I guess, sorry, I need to back up. The news we heard tonight about the grant, that safer grant, you know, that's several million dollars, so probably salary. So that's impacting the percentage increase assumptions for staff? Or are there other places that we might see those numbers impact these charts and projections? Or how would you, how would you see those?
Well, it will have an impact, I mean, and here's the thing that, so we're going to have this revenue source come in. We still then in order to meet the grant qualifications, in addition to the 12 firefighters that we've already pledged and will put into place at 2025. We have to have three more. So staff is going to have to be on it to get three more firefighters to meet what we said our grant would cover or what it's for. And making sure the fire stations then are suitable for the 15 full-time firefighters.
Can you back up for us a second? If we got the grant, we can back pay the six that we already hired?
No, no, no.
Okay, because we get 18 total, okay.
The grant was for 15.
It was for 18 the first time.
Okay.
Right?
But we're planning, we're planning 18. So that's only 12.
The grant application was for 15.
So now we'd be planning for 21?
No, no, no. We just will both pay for three on our own once we get to that. So we were phasing.
So we have six minus the 18 is 12.
So instead of hiring six in 2026, we would hire three. So next year, we're going to hire nine instead of six. So, because we were phasing at six, six and six. Now we would do six this year, nine in 25 and then three in 26 instead of six in 26.
But that's only 12.
No.
That's why I'm asking this.
Plus the six we already have.
That's what I just asked.
But we can't pay them back. So we can pay, so that first year we're paying their salary. But moving forward, the six we already hired will be covered under the grant.
So hypothetically, we now have 18 firefighters and we apply for another grant. We can use it to pay for the 18 that we have, is what you're saying?
Right, until it runs out.
And there's, you know, and Justin and I have talked about this as okay, so, but you know, we would want to have input as, you know, from council, maybe the finance committee, however you want to structure this. But so this is for three years that we have these payments come in from this grant. Do we want to structure it so that we're not realizing this huge drop if we don't get a renewal of the grant after the three years? We don't want a huge spike then in the tax levy, do we? Base this in so that our fund balances kind of like building up a little bit, just so we're not having this huge.
Yeah, you want a fiscal cliff in 2027.
Right, that would be smart.
Yeah, so then that actually then wouldn't have as much effect in a financial model because maybe looking at kind of gradual increase anyway, so that doesn't.
So we don't have a drop off.
Got it.
And there, no assumption in the numbers you saw that you're going to receive like you did, congratulations, the safer grant.
Sorry, I need to go into my new show, one small thing, but a lot of, a lot to digest here. But I, in that, I do feel like as I read through each chart, it gives me a different snapshot or a different angle that helps me understand kind of where we're headed. And I think overall, it feels like a positive trajectory in terms of, because you know, in terms of capacity, levy capacity and potential percentages that we would be loving overall. I'm not seeing those double digit numbers that we've seen this year and last year. So if there were to be feedback, it would be, we'll try to stick to this trajectory. Because to me, this is where I think we, most of us want to be going forward. Yeah, I mean, we still have two more years of maybe increases in levy versus. But I think all these visuals, you know, just the different angles that it provides.
I don't want to interrupt you.
No, that.
I guess the only thing is, is that the vote is not in on franchise fees. And from my understanding is, is that council members have been telling the public that there is no formal decision yet. And yet this document makes it a formal decision.
It, it does not make it a formal decision again, this is a planning model to.
No, but it has it all in there as a formal decision.
And if we don't, I mean, if the, if the kind of decision is not to do franchise fees, then this model can be changed up and it's going to look a whole lot, it'll look different.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, again, I mean, this presenting different scenarios takes time, not only our time, their time, you know, and if to present, you want how many scenarios you want. It's going to take money and time to do that, we, we do that, I mean, we can't. We can't start going with Northland, but.
I'm not trying to criticize you guys. You did, you walked away with the information you already had from the council and. I'm talking to my fellow council members about the message that's being given right now to the public in that this is not a final decision. And yet, yet if the public were to look at this document, because it's a public document, it would be as if it is. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? So, you know, I'm already outvoted on it. It's probably, you know, probably going to happen in November. It's probably, you know, probably going to happen in November, but I was just, I guess that's not the message currently that's been given to the, the public. They're supposed to be giving our input, their input on that fee in August, September, and October.
Yeah, Michelle, I noticed the same thing that you noticed, that this is, this is set up with franchise fees. I, that hasn't, it hasn't been noted on yet. So how this looks, if it doesn't make it, I, I don't want to put the curve before the eyes because we had this conversation one or two work sessions ago. This is a process, and we're in the middle of determining if, in my mind, we're getting feedback from the public. I was very vocal about saying, you know, my take on it is going to depend on what the public's stomach for this is. And either way, there's going to be, to be money spent on, on these things. Whether that's through a franchise fee or through a levy, that money is going to be spent. What this shows me is that, well, you know, hey, if there's a franchise fee, then, you know, our debt levels are lower. But I'm hearing like the example with the fire truck. It's like, yeah, we can say in two thousand twenty-six, we want to buy a fire truck, but the reality is, is we won't be paying for that truck till two thousand thirty.
Just to clarify though, we're not bonding the franchise fee authority. We're using it, so the, the debt will, is, looks the same no matter what. It's how we're paying. It's, the levy is what changes it.
Yeah.
So the, the long-term look at the debt is the same, because we have to buy the building, the source of revenue. So the, the major change in here is assumption is on the levy side, not on the debt side.
And that's, that's very clear from here is that this is what the levy looks like with a franchise fee. For somebody reading this, I'd want them to understand that there's still eleven million dollars out there. And whether that's reflected in the levy thing or whether that's reflected in just a franchise fee, that money is, is still out there.
Mayor, council member, not weighing in on your policy discussion, but to answer from a report standpoint, yes, it is, and it's factored in there at five million dollars available a year to pay debt service approximately. So if the franchise fee is not adopted, you're still authorized to issue the debt, but the tax levy that is shown in this report would be five million dollars greater than what is shown per.
Yeah.
Once all the brothers, yeah. So in the first couple of years, it would be technically levy at all the same time, but yes.
And so. Fantastic report, so don't get me wrong.
And the other thing that I just wanted to ask about, because it is fantastic, it's very detailed. I agree with my colleagues that this is very helpful in seeing what this looks like. And in general, we can expect some pretty tough years or lean years for the next few years. But in general, you know, we can't predict the economy or anything. Things will, will look better after that. And I mean, I always want to put us in a position that's long-term. And, you know, we talked about this earlier with the economic development piece, that, you know, as growth slows and we look at redevelopment, how do we financially have ourselves set up for that? And the economic reality now is everything's more expensive. It's just as much more expensive for the city to buy it as it is for somebody to pay it for, for their personal. But it, it just seems like we're going to have a few, couple tough years, and then things will, will get better all things equal.
Other questions or comments? Thank you both. Very helpful. Okay. Moving on, any items for future discussion? Any committee or city administrator?
We had a ALAC, Air Lake Airport Advisory Commission meeting in September. Covered some information in terms of, you know, we got our reports for our complaints. What's really interesting, I just want to say it so people hear it, like, like we had, we have hardly any complaints, typically zero. We had two last time. Well, because of reporting problem, not, I, I call it a problem, it's just reporting procedure. Those flights originated in Lakeville, but the, the complaints actually occurred in different communities in a totally different part of the metro. But because that complaint was received there, they figured out where the flight originated from, and it gets counted as a complaint here. So if you're a citizen and you look at that, you go, well, look, we got two complaints. We had zero Lakeville related complaints. And then we talked about just the continuing development at the airport. We have the new hangar that's, that's progressing. And there's been the runway project, extending the runway. Not a significant distance, I think it's like a hundred and forty feet total to make it a little safer, but that is still in process, and that's definitely a MAC. A MAC project, and they're working on it. So those are the things that we talked about.
Yeah, I do know Commissioner Holbert is talking to the county engineer about that, if it's actually feasible to do that. You have to move cedar.
Yeah, there's a lot of students, so.
Well, the, some of the airport claim that you can bend cedar.
Bend?
Bend it.
Well, task force is flexible, right?
Yeah.
Cedar is a softy.
Yeah, that's right. Any other updates?
So my update will be on the arenas. But first thing I want to mention is that starting next month, our meeting will actually be held on the Wednesday following this, our, our work session.
Okay.
So any future updates that I would ever come back to with would be over a month old. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But the important things that came out of this one is that the board approved the, a temporary salary increase for three of the employees will be working on the new pavilion instead of, instead of outsourcing the work that, the rest of the work that needs to be done, these three employees will be doing it over the next year. So they'll get a temporary salary increase for that work over and above their regular. So they still have to do their regular job. So it's kind of like in the finance department where we gave that temporary increase because of the, the project itself to implement. It's the same type of deal. And then the other thing is, is that Mr. Verquist is looking into leasing some equipment versus just outright buying it and bringing down his capital fund. And those pieces were a snow pile and.
Examining.
Not examining. It's two big pieces of equipment that, at this point, we are contracting for those services. And then instead, they would be doing it at both arenas. Which I just wanted to make sure, because I, the question I had to Justin and, and he, you know, because I said, oh, well, we have this page type thing from the council. But I mean, it's only, that, I want to say it was a hun, let's say around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand, I think, for these two pieces of equipment, and I don't know what the lease term is. But it's not YouTube's like, you know, what we deal with. So anyway, at this point, the board has given them the approval to go out and investigate what that lease would be on those, on that equipment. And then the other thing is, is that, and so I want to let you know that we are also, we are going to be paying Mr. Verquist and his son's LLC. I'm going to call on LLC. He didn't, I don't remember what he gave us for a corporate name, to actually rent their bobcat. And so he'll be receiving fifty dollars an hour for that. I just wanted to be upfront with you that what we directed him to do is not pay himself for his bobcat, but to go through his company. I, I just feel like you need to know that that was kind of a gray area to me, and I felt that it was really important that you knew that as a board, that they made the decision to allow, to, to pay him. Or other, you know, it would be like, if he, he needs that bobcat to do the work at the pavilion. So it's cheaper to pay for a, a bobcat that, that they currently own as an independent business versus renting it. But, so I wanted to be upfront with you on that, John, you're like, I know, it, it does send a red flag.
I could give red flag nothing, because, no, I, I would really revisit that.
What is your concern?
My concern is, is that you have somebody who's got a decision-making influence, that's making a profit off of work that is being done there. That, that does not rub me correct at all.
So even though we would pay a lot more if we had to rent one from another entity that we'd have to go get it?
And they're the ones that would be operating it.
Yeah, I, I think, to me, I would feel much more comfortable if there was some disassociation from the business between, you know, maybe if this is an LLC, and if he's going to enter into this kind of agreement, that, that he would find a way to remove himself as a benefactor from the LLC. And, and yes, even if it does cost a little more there, I think a lot, I, I'm not comfortable with it.
And anybody else?
It seems like an expense reimbursement to me, I guess.
It is like an expense reimbursement.
So you're using the car to go to that beginning. I mean, it's now, you said fifty dollars an hour, so it is kind of a location.
And the city's, in the city's schedule, our fee rate for a bobcat rental is seventy-eight dollars an hour. And you would only bill for the actual hour usage, so.
So the other, this is the other thing that you're more comfortable with. Some evidence that this isn't costing a city, in the heat, there's no profit. I just have a real problem with somebody in a decision-making position making money off of a decision that they're making.
So if there's a check and balance, you'd be more comfortable with it?
I'd be more comfortable if, if, if Mr. Verquist wasn't making a direct profit. In other words, if, if he finds a way to disassociate himself, as long as that agreement is in place, or if it, if it's even, if it's.
What if it's his son's company?
And he's not on the, he's not listed on the company and all that, that's one thing. I, I just.
Because he mentioned to company, it's great. It could go either way.
So what's John's saying, he'd be more comfortable that it was the son's company that was receiving the rental?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a rental, it's a rate. I just, I mean, I don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah, but at the same time, there is oversight from the board. I think that the checks and balances that it was looked at by another body is that he doesn't have sole authority, or maybe he does, but brought it to the board.
That's fine, brought it to the board.
So, so I think that's what makes, I mean, it is a gray zone, but I think that's what puts it over the edge. It's okay if it's been approved by the board with oversight there, but.
I, I disagree. I, I just disagree with that. I, somebody has, I, I disagree.
Honestly, I disagreed in the beginning when I thought it was a direct reimbursement to him. And that's why I asked the question. Do you have an LLC? Do you have anything that's separate from you employee? And that's when he brought up, he does, and his son does. And the son, I believe the son owns the bobcat. I think that's the way I understood it.
I can't remember.
If, if it's a son's company, that's a different thing.
Okay.
It's, in my mind, it's still gray, but at least it's not somebody that is in the decision-making capacity making, making money off of that or receiving money from the city. So yeah, that, or yeah, if it's a son's company, or, you know, it's totally.
And, and just remember that Justin, Justin and Julie are also on that committee. So we did, no, she doesn't vote. But, but so that was discussed, you know, with all of us trying to come up with a solution versus a direct reimbursement.
Yeah, or, you know, or find, find another man named, a slippery slope here.
Okay.
Let's just confirm that there's some checks and balances, and we'll report back on that.
So, I mean, would you like, because like a comparison, okay, and it could be, I mean, it's a cost savings. We, we know that because if you go, the time that staff would have to go to get a bobcat and then come back, and they would just, this bobcat would just be.
He was going to use the meter reading.
Yeah.
And then he was going to document, and I, I assume maybe even with a camera, you know, document and only charge for the actual hours on the meter.
Yeah, and I don't doubt, to be honest, I don't doubt the faithfulness and report. It's inappropriate for somebody who's in a decision-making moment to be receiving money based on, the city money, based on a decision.
But is it his decision or is it the board's decision because he brought it to them to say, we can rent it? Or I can offer the same thing at a much discounted.
Who decides how many hours it's used? Is it, is it him directly?
Yes, because we don't, as a board, we're not going to get, no. Because we wouldn't even know the hours that it was going to be used.
Because I mean, even though it's a good rate.
And that's where I'm deciding, let's just see if we got some checks and balances, and then we'll report back.
And I'm sure Justin's going to love that he's not here, that I brought this.
Yeah.
But I, in all fairness, I really think it's important to bring you information that's coming out of a committee.
Right.
And, and, you know, even though that decision's been made, I'm sure we can come up with something if it, you know, makes the council uncomfortable. And I guess, I would hope that any of our committees, that we would bring forth anything that we think could be questionable, that, but that was decided.
Yeah, I, I believe there's a conflict of interest there. But yeah, I just want people to understand. I say I don't think, it's somebody that's trying to help out and help the city and do something that, although it, you know, makes sense, there's a conflict of interest there.
Okay. And Julie, do you remember anything? I think that's about the biggest stuff, right?
Yeah, the, the leasing versus buying was on snow removal equipment. So, yeah, for the financing of the new snow removal equipment, oh, we tabled that on the October meeting.
I think those were the big items.
Resolution, yeah. Salary plans was the big.
Because the rest of the, you know, normally, typically, I think it won't be such a big deal that everything's a month behind. And maybe I won't even report on something because it's a month behind. But, but I just felt like, because really, the arenas just run themselves, but with this new construction going on, there's some, you know, things. Like, for instance, we approved the five-year extension on the warranty, you know. So there's been some things that have been happening. But mentioning that, I'll taper off. It'll just be two arenas running. Thanks.
Good. The only thing I had, I, we had our department manager meeting on Friday. Great presentation from Endota Heights. They got a, them and Minneapolis got a special law change where they're allowed to issue administrative citations using speed cameras. That's a pilot program. And the legislature did this because many years ago, they challenged the constitutionality of stoplight cameras, for instance. And so this is administrat- And so this is administrative and so it doesn't hit your insurance. And that's why the, the legislature thinks it could pass muster. But what was fascinating is that the system takes, takes your license plate and then the city can send a warning to say, hey, you know, don't speed in this neighborhood kind of thing. And what I was intrigued by, so we couldn't issue an ordinance, but we could buy one of these systems. And the reason I bring that up, because there's a lot of times I get calls from people and say, hey, there's people speeding. And then that means Brad's dedicated a person to that neighborhood at a cost. Where if we could have a camera set up and sending people notices like, hey, slow down.
You know.
So they, they don't keep the data, they don't keep the data for more than 30 days. There's a whole bunch of privacy stuff in the state.
Ever use them temporarily? So if you're really just trying to use them as a way of slowing down a neighbor?
Yeah, so what they have is a cart, or trailers, it's a speed trailer. So Minneapolis is permanently installed in, but Mendota, because the state law allows you only have one for 12,000, like pot. You only have one speed camera per 12,000. I don't know how they get that number, but yes, so they, right now it's been in one neighborhood that has a lot of construction. But yes, you could move it around. So the idea would be, okay, this week, the Hamburg neighborhood is calling, so we're going to roll this thing out there for two weeks or something.
Yeah, I mean, for warnings, I, yeah, I mean, it'd be a great way, especially when your kids drive into your car and mom and dad get the notice. For warnings, I have a problem when it starts turning into a fine in the citation.
Yeah.
Even administrator.
And we legally couldn't anyway. So it would be more of a like, hey, we're just trying to tell people slow down.
And are they going to use the camera to investigate a crime? Because something went rolling by.
Uh, I don't know. That'd be a good question to ask.
Probably you're saying we can do it now for just the warnings, but it's legislative and look, yeah, and actually the legislature may get.
So do you?
Yeah. Okay.
I was about to talk about the future.
Yeah, I just, so the trailer's $20,000. And so I pitched that to the Public Safety Foundation to see if they're interested. Because again, it's, to me, it's, we could have a potential cost savings on having a cop sitting around in the neighborhood to slow people down if we're just going to.
There are complaints lately on that.
What Mendota said, Mendota Heights, sorry, there's two. It was recent. What they said is many cases are, it's like, oh, my kid was driving my car. Thanks for letting me know. And now we're going to have some conversations about speed and.
Responsible driving.
Responsible driving, so. Anyway, I thought it was, it was a good presentation. I didn't realize that was a thing. I thought it was very funny that they were the only city to get it for whatever reason.
You know, the only thing I did think of maybe for future is talking to the Communications Department on one of our youth persons concerned about crosswalks. Because we are a community that most of us drive where there are other communities where a lot of people pass, so you're always looking for, you know, pedestrians, but because we're always driving all the time, pedestrians are not our thought.
So the city did a video on back to school on social media the last couple of weeks. I'm reminding for crosswalks and stuff. I do know. I can send it to you if you haven't seen it. It's pretty good. But yeah, I mean, I think that fits into that new pedestrian plan that we have. I was, I saw a city in California, they had a guy dressed up in a chicken costume, very flamboyant to catch people not obeying crosswalks. So like clearly you can see this guy. And they were, you know, he would blow, they would blow up the crosswalk as he's entering the situation.
He will stick the chicken.
Speaking of communications, are we close to the one-year point for the newsletters? And looking at, have we done three? So yeah, I guess, yeah. Fourth quarter, are we coming out next month? Is there, uh, I think we had talked about having some sort of report back on effectiveness or, you know, readership, if we can.
Stats.
Yeah. Let's see what, what she's collected. Maybe we're going to have the number of mailings that we mail out, but I don't, we're not going to have any stats on readership. We've gotten reports back that people like it. We haven't got any reports back from anybody not liking it.
I don't remember. We would have told her what we were looking for though.
So maybe she remembers.
Well, for some, I thought we were going to try to include some sort of engagement piece in a newsletter so that we could track like QR scans or, you know, just to see who opened it up and scanned a code. Looked at a YouTube video that was online, trying to get more engagement kind of across platforms.
Yeah, you could in theory do a QR code, do a Billy link which tracks specific to see if people scanned it.
So I don't know if, if the fourth quarter newsletter is in the final. Because I would be curious to see how many people are engaging with the content newsletter.
Well, the newspaper is down to 2,000 subscribers. They're giving indication about.
Well, I think that's the other thing we wanted to talk about, with the, the plan. You know, how receptive was this newsletter? What's our plan moving forward? Maybe not utilize the newspaper.
Oh, I should, sorry, I have no feeling. So we had a regional council mayor's meeting last month. Steve Groh, the new publisher of the Star Tribune, we were talking about the future of newspapers and they're like, well, we want to be more local, but not hyper-local. Some of us in the room were kind of pushing to say, at some point, we need to have a real conversation about public notices and that financial model. And he was open to it. I mean, he doesn't want to get away from it, obviously, because it's a revenue source, but it's an antiquated law. I think there, there could be, they could still sell public notice ads on their digital platform and then we wouldn't have to, you know. So anyway, that's a, because if we get to the point where the sun this week goes away, we have to find a newspaper reminder again, and I'd rather not pay a Star Tribune rate if they're the only ones.
I mean, finding hospitals that committed a December.
Yeah, and they would go away before this week, I would imagine. This week because it was ready, you know.
Right.
Newspaper.
Right.
And local, but yeah. So anyway, that's just out there. There'll be a conversation for cities and the newspaper industry to have. Um, I don't have anything else with that. I'll take a motion adjourned. We do have one more interview afterwards.
I'm going to adjourn.
For a second.
Second.
All's in bear, say hi.
Hi.
Post, we're adjourned. Thank you.